Good evening. It is September the 12th, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into a closed session under Texas Government Code Section 551.074. No action will be taken, and we'll return here shortly. The Board will reconvene at this time in open meeting. No action was taken during our closed meeting. Welcome to our regular Board meeting of the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees. This evening, we have Ken Griffiths, who is a senior pastor at Keystone Church that will lead our invocation. Following that, we'll have a posting of colors by a group of JROTC cadets from West Mesquite High School, and the pledges of allegiance will be led by JROTC Commander Lieutenant Colonel Iris Mota. I would invite you at this time to stand for our invocation and our pledges.
Shall we pray? Father God, we are always thankful for every opportunity that we can gather together. We pray that today, everything would be done pleasing in your sight. I would ask that you would grant to this Board, Father, wisdom and perspective in their decisions. May they look past what is popular and easy and make decisions that are the best for our children. Father God, let your presence be felt here today, and we ask it in that matchless name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
[Inaudible] Square guard, up. Freeze it. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Father, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Is someone representing the PTA here?
Yes.
Welcome. We're glad you all are here.
Hello. Thank you for having us, and good evening. My name's Emily Buchanan. I am your president this year, and this is Alejandra Crone. She is our membership chair. I just want to say, joinpta.org is back up and going, and for people to get on there and become members. I'm going to hand it over to Alejandra, she's going to give her message in English and Spanish.
Good evening, everyone. I am here behalf of PTA to invite everyone, not only here, but in Mesquite community at large, to support our schools, our kids, and by definition, also you guys, the district, and by joining PTA. Anyone can join PTA because everybody can back the future, and our children are our future. It's very easy. You don't have to have a kid in the school. Nothing at all, really. If you want to support your schools, go ahead to joinpta.org and pick your school. Pick your membership. For all of you who have Angel membership forms, please turn them in as soon as you can so we can continue to support this effort. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alejandra Crone, y en este momento estoy hablando acerca de la membresía para el PTA. Quiero invitar a toda la comunidad de Mesquite en general a que se unan a apoyar a nuestros niños, nuestras escuelas, y por ende al distrito uniéndose al PTA. El PTA está aquí para apoyar a todos los niños, para ayudarlos a tener un mejor futuro, porque todos podemos apoyar al futuro. Todos podemos unirnos al PTA. No es necesario tener un niño en una escuela. Es simple y sencillamente necesario querer participar. Por favor, vayan a joinpta.org, porque todos juntos podemos crecer, y la unión hace la fuerza. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to add to our Board moment?
Yes. I just wanted to share with all of you. We supported Linda Gooch for Director at Tasby, and the nominations committee met this weekend. We had five positions we had to interview for. We had about 12 candidates that we interviewed, as a matter of fact, for those five positions. And one of them was the Region 10 position, and Linda Gooch was chosen as the candidate for Region 10B. So I'm really happy about that. She is a good friend of public education. She's been working with us for 26 years or so. So that was a good story for the weekend. I thought I'd share that. And don't forget, we have the State Conference, not next week, but the following, and there are some resolutions that are going to go through. We have 184 resolutions that were looked at. It's the most that we've ever looked at, but they're very positive towards public education as well. So those of you that are going to be there, look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Eddie, you and Tia will be our delegates, and Tia will be our alternate, and Kevin will be there too.
By virtue of being in the district, you are a delegate.
Right. Okay, anything else? Before we go on to student and staff guests, I hesitated to, or I failed to mention that Elaine Whitlock had surgery a few weeks ago, so she has an excused absence tonight, but we do anticipate her back. She's undergoing rehab right now, but I spoke with her earlier this afternoon, and she's doing well. So next item is student and staff guests. We'll move to the Apple Corps honorees. Ms. Joe?
Yes, sir. We have two honorees that we'll be inducting into the Apple Corps this evening. The first is Emily Taylor from Price Elementary School. She's an ESL teacher, and we have a brief video to introduce her to you.
Ms. Taylor is a dedicated educator that is definitely deserving of this honor. She is a leader in and out of the classroom and believes in all of our students. Ms. Taylor is enthusiastic about her content and actively listens, which helps develop a trusting relationship between her and the students she interacts with. Congratulations, Ms. Taylor. We are so very proud of you.
I believe teaching is important because without teachers, we would not have any of the other professions that we have today. Teachers are important because they are instilling in our children a desire to be successful in life, to be able to pursue goals in life, and be able to become lifelong learners. I enjoy teaching because of the students. I enjoy when something connects with them, the smiles on their faces, and the excitement in our classroom.
Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD AppCorps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the Board officially welcomes Emily Taylor into the Mesquite ISD AppCorps on this 12th day of September, 2022. Congratulations.
I want to start out by introducing my family. I have my husband Danny and my daughter Ashley, and my daughter Megan, who actually made it in from Longview today, from nursing school, so she actually made it here on time. My son Daniel is currently at Baylor University, and he probably should be studying, but who knows what he's doing right now. But I am pleased to say that all three of my children are MISD graduates, and so I thank you for that. I would like to begin by saying it is an honor to be standing here receiving this Apple Corps Award for teaching. I want to first start off by thanking God for blessing me with this opportunity to teach for over 33 years. People often ask me why I still do what I do, and I tell them that I feel like that teaching is my mission field and that I feel called to teach. And so I am just very thankful that God has given me that opportunity. Next, I want to say thank you to Dr. Rivera and the school board for this honor, and thank you for what you're doing for the employees and the students of MISD. Next, I would like to thank Ashley Goodwin and all the other many administrators that I've had over the past 33 years of my teaching that have allowed me to do what I love to do, and that is to teach. I want to thank my Price family who voted for me. I don't know if any of them are here yet. I know Ashley's here, but I think a couple of them are in mentor training. But I want to tell them that they are a joy to work alongside, and they are making a difference daily for our students and to keep it up. Finally, I want to say thank you to my husband and my family, both near and far, for always believing in me, encouraging me, and supporting me, and praying for me daily. I love you all. In closing, John Wooden once said, "I think the teaching profession contributes more to the future of our society than any other single profession." So to the countless teachers that show up each and every day for your students, here's to the future. Thank you.
Emily, if you would, you introduced your family. Y'all stand for us. And then also, anyone from Price Elementary, or if you're a colleague of Emily's, please stand so we can recognize you. Okay. Congratulations, Emily. Laura?
Our next honoree this evening is Ashley Cook from Seaborn Elementary. She is the librarian there.
Hi. It is my honor to introduce our Apple Corps recipient at Seaborn Elementary, Ms. Ashley Cook. There isn't much that happens here at Seaborn without the help of Ashley. From her sponsoring programs, serving on committees, writing grants, all while supporting our students and staff, she has made our library the heart of our school. Ms. Cook, you exemplify what it means to be a Seaborn Lion. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Ashley Cook, and I'm the librarian here at Seaborn Elementary, and I have the honor of being an Apple Corps recipient. I think being a librarian and a teacher is very important because here in the library, I have the benefit of seeing all of our students. I get to shape the minds from our three-year-olds all the way up to our fifth graders. In the library, we learn all kinds of important skills. The kids come in here for research projects, they come in here for advanced academics lessons. There's a wide range of activities that we learn.
Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD AppCorps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the Board officially welcomes Ashley Cook into the Mesquite ISD AppCorps on this 12th day of September, 2022. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Rivera and the Board for this recognition. Thank you also to my Seaborn family. I work with some of the most amazing people, and to know that they nominated me for this honor makes it that much more special. I am a product of Mesquite ISD. I grew up attending McQuarrie Elementary, Wilkinson Middle School, and West Mesquite High School, and I've returned to West Side Best Side. Educators that I had throughout my entire school career inspired me to become a teacher. I did not start my teaching career in Mesquite, but I always knew I wanted to find my way back home to this district. In 2017, my principal, Renee Kern, took a chance on me by hiring me as a librarian at her school, and I am truly grateful to her for that. Working under her leadership has given me so many opportunities to grow as an educator. I'm also thankful for the library services team. I've had the honor of working with Mary Woodard and Deborah Schwartz, and now Emma McDonald and Lauren Jones, and they have pushed me to grow in my profession as a librarian, and I'm so grateful for their leadership. Being a librarian is an extremely rewarding opportunity for me. I get to work with every single student in the school, helping them fall in love with reading, teaching them important skills, and providing them with transformative and enriching experiences. Not only do the students learn from me, but I learn from them as well each and every day. They inspire me and they keep me motivated. To see a student at the library at 9:00 AM and hear them ask me a dismissal, "When do I get to come back to the library?", lets me know that they love coming to the library and that I am where I am meant to be. In my role, I also get the opportunity to work with every staff member and collaborate with each teacher on campus. We have so many teaching rock stars on our campus, and they support the library, and that support is so gratifying to me. Thank you again to my Seaborn family. You are all so very appreciated. And last but not least, I want to thank my family for always loving and supporting me. Thank you to my husband Edwin and my beautiful daughter Emma, to my mom Sandra, and to my sister Melanie and my nieces Vanessa and Isabella for coming out tonight. I love you all. Thank you.
You introduced your family. I would invite you to stand if you will and let us recognize you. And then if you teach or if you're a colleague of Ashley's, we'd invite you to stand. Congratulations to both of you. We appreciate you and value what you do for our district very much. You have anything, Dr. Rivera? Laura?
Okay. We also recognize a paraprofessional employee each month, and today, that honoree is Wanda Bailey from Black Elementary School. But before we call her forward, I want to ask Lisa Porter to come forward and tell us a little bit about MEPA and what this award means.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and good evening, attendees. I'm Lisa Porter. I'm a MEPA mentor, and I'm excited to tell you about the STAR Award. STAR stands for Stellar Teammate Award Recipient. It was created in 2017 as a way to recognize paraprofessionals in the district who go above and beyond. They are nominated by their principal or department or peers, and they must be a member of the Mesquite Educational Paraprofessional Association, which is MEPA. MEPA provides staff development opportunities for the paras in the district. The nominees must have served at least one year of paraprofessional experience in the Mesquite ISD, and we are excited that the Crook-Maligan Group has partnered with Mesquite ISD to sponsor this program. They award the recipients with a gift card, and the district gives them a STAR trophy and a certificate, and this month's winner will be introduced by the campus principal. Thank you.
Darla Franklin from Black Elementary. I'm the principal there. Wanda Bailey was nominated for STAR Para of the Month for the dedication she has shown to students and staff at Black Elementary. Mrs. Bailey has been at Black for 29 years, serving in all capacities, from cafeteria monitor to secretary. For 20 years, I've seen the impact she has had at Black by helping many students become successful. She loves the personal reward of helping these students reach their full potential. Mrs. Bailey's determination to make a difference in education is evident also in her community by serving as Region 10 ATPE Director. This position advocates for educators in the region. Mrs. Bailey is deserving of this award for her willingness to help others, students and teachers, at Black Elementary as well as the educational community. Congratulations, Wanda Bailey.
Okay. Our first group of students that we're recognizing this evening are AP Scholars, and they were granted this honor for receiving a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And our first honoree is Sophia Garcia from Horn High School. Our next AP Scholar is Diego Rodriguez Castro from Horn High School. Zia Alayon from John Horn High School, also an AP Scholar. Next is AP Scholar Mia Hernandez from John Horn High School. All right. Our next honoree is also an AP Scholar from Horn. Her name is Favor Onya Cuera. Next, from Horn High School, is Bourecat Chateray, an AP Scholar. Next is Brianna Worta, an AP Scholar from Horn High School. This next group of AP Scholars is from Mesquite High School. We'll begin with Angela Garcia. Our next group of scholars are from North Mesquite High School. We'll begin with Diego Amador Garcia. Jocelyn Vasquez. This next group of scholars, they're all from Potite High School. Our next group of AP Scholars are from West Mesquite High School. This is Cynthia Acosta Lopez. Kenya Martinez Boca Negra. Our next group of students are AP Scholars with Honor. This honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of the exams. So, they did very well. From North Mesquite High School, AP Scholar with Honor, Jesus Ventura. From Potite High School, Christopher Rollins, AP Scholar with Honor. From Potite, Matthew Weaver, AP Scholar with Honor. From West Mesquite High School, Giselle Herrera, AP Scholar with Honor. Mega Joseph, AP Scholar with Honor from Mesquite High School. All right. This next group of students are AP Scholars with Distinction. This award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of the exams. So, from Mesquite High School, we have Darlene Santos, AP Scholar with Distinction. From North Mesquite High School, Eloy Gonzalez, AP Scholar with Distinction. From Potite, Joyana Revland, AP Scholar with Distinction. From Potite, Ernesto Rodriguez, AP Scholar with Distinction. From Potite, Matthew Sanchez, AP Scholar with Distinction. From West Mesquite High School, Jimmy Fan, AP Scholar with Distinction. And from West Mesquite High School, Lucas Ranfrans, AP Scholar with Distinction. Moving on, we have a couple of lifesaving awards to present tonight. First is Seaburn Principal. She receives the Lifesaver Award. Renee Kern, are you here Renee? Okay, come on, come on up. So let me tell you why she's getting this award. Piccadilly Road quickly flooded on August 22nd. A first grade teacher at Seaburn had to escape her car as the water raised it in while driving. Shortly after, a Seaburn family was stuck right behind that same car. Principal Jewel Kern did not think twice and went into action to help save that family out of the flooded vehicle, along with other staff. A third vehicle drove into those high waters, and Ms. Kern was out there to help push that car out of the water. So we're grateful to her for her actions. Congratulations. And we have two more Lifesaver Awards. So Javier Ventura? No, I'm sorry. Hasriel Montez and Dahelia James Bernard, are you here? Okay, y'all come up and come forward. So here's what happened. On August 31st, during dismissal, Woolley Student Javier Ventura was choking. Hasriel Montez was nearby and patted him on the back several times to help Javier. The student eventually vomited, and the bottle cap was dislodged. Ms. James Bernard had crosswalk duty and was called while the incident was occurring. She led him into the building, provided him with water, and helped him practice breathing exercises to help the recolor return to his face. The MISD Board is grateful for the exceptional actions and thoughts both Hasriel and Ms. Bernard displayed to help the student, and are proud to present them with Lifesaving Awards. We're not done yet. Okay, two of our MISD teachers have been promoted to the highest level of the E-TIP Program, which is District Scholar. Please welcome Dr. Deirdre Reeves from Austin Elementary, and Molly Dersham from Mesquite High School. For those of you who don't know, there's a lot of work that goes into reaching this level of professional development, so we're very proud of them. Okay, y'all can go back now. Our next honoree is a Mesquite ISD Community Partner for Replay Talk, and I believe we have a video to highlight their contributions.
This month, we are excited to recognize the Auxiliary to the Mesquite Elks Lodge as our featured Replay Talk Community Partner.
There's just numerous things that we involve ourselves in, and we like to give back, and we like to promote children.
The Auxiliary made a donation to Replay Talk at the end of the spring semester, and their donation allowed us to do so many things this summer. We were able to purchase books, toys, and other resources for families who participated in our parent education programs, and we're also able to purchase some resources that were handed out at some of our summer events.
I think children, you know, are so important because they're our future. And the Replay Talk Program gives them the foundation for learning, and it just helps them in every aspect of their life.
We are so grateful for our partnership with the Auxiliary to the Mesquite Elks Lodge, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with them.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Bingham, and a second by Mr. Seward to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item will be our Audience portion. We have Mr. Michael, I believe it's Eagle Burger, is that right? Please come forward and give us your address. You're going to speak regarding item under administration on the voter-approved tax rate election.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I appreciate it. This is my first board meeting, so I appreciate you guys having me up. I just wanted to bring up the issue of really being concerned and making sure all of our school campuses here in Mesquite have at least an armed guard, or if anything, maybe a prior veteran or prior police force that's willing to have a weapon on them, and also promoting our teachers to maybe concealed carry in the campuses, just to protect our kids, make sure we don't have any tragedies like have happened in the past. That's just what I wanted to bring up to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So I know Colonel CNO, where are you? All right, so I know we have a beautiful room back there. We got some guests, so come on to the front. And introduce your, here you go.
Well, good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Rivera, and Board. As is customary in the month of September, I normally address the Board to give them the state of the JROTC program and show you the direction in which we're going. Due to COVID, it's been a while since we've had the opportunity to introduce the instructors, so I'd like to do that first, and then get into the Board presentation. So, obviously, I am Colonel CNO, the Director of Army Instruction. My right hand is First Sergeant Knowton, who runs our operations as well as our logistics. And then from Mesquite High School, we have Major Martinez and First Sergeant Hubert. From North Mesquite, we have Major Buckner and Sergeant First Class Chavez. From West Mesquite, we have Colonel McGory, First Sergeant Suazo, and Sergeant First Class Farrell. From Potite High School, we have Lieutenant Colonel Emery and First Sergeant Ruiz. And from Horn High School, we have Lieutenant Colonel Burton, Sergeant First Class Tubbs, and Sergeant First Class Scribbling. And from Vanguard High School, we have Major Wolverton and Sergeant First Class Kel. Please join me in a round of applause for our instructors. In 2019, I addressed the Board about the new direction that Mesquite ISD JROTC would be taking in order to remain at the cutting edge of the JROTC program. And so there's about four different things I'd like to talk about this evening. The first is, in May, Mesquite ISD JROTC had the opportunity to send 12 teams to the VEX World Robotics Championship. That number 12 is extremely significant, considering we had the highest number of teams in our brigade, which is an eight-state area, as well as on the national level. What's unique about this is our teams had the opportunity to compete in what is the largest robotics competition in the world. It has middle school level, two high school levels, and a college level. Also, our teams had the opportunity to mingle with cadets, or rather, students from 40 different countries. And so, if you witness the opening ceremonies, it is much akin to the opening ceremonies of the Olympic Games. And so our students had the unique experience to participate this year with 12 teams, and having a team from every one of our high schools actually participate. Our robotics teams have done a lot, and we've received a lot of help from the Army as well as grants. We've received over $61,000, and over $40,000 of that has come from the United States Army, and we received over $21,000 in grants. We are now at the forefront of JROTC robotics in the country, and we also host one of the largest JROTC robotics competitions in North Texas. We talked about our partnership with Texas A&amp;M Commerce, and as most folks know, we have a great partnership with A&amp;M Commerce for our teachers, but obviously, not as many of our students, our largest number of students, actually attend UNT. So we're enhancing that relationship with A&amp;M Commerce. We have them right here on our district property. And so, we've provided a very unique experience this year for our cadets. We spent four days and three nights at Texas A&amp;M, and for our summer program, our students were allowed to live in the college dorms. They received classes from college professors and college students. They received a college tour, and they also had the opportunity to run through the entire engineering process with VEX Robotics, from being presented the problem, and then building a robot, programming that robot, and then competing in a robotics competition. We also incorporated in that the Cadet Leadership Challenge, and that was the opportunity to allow the cadets to do orienteering, swimming and drown-proofing, high ropes, low ropes, and leader reaction course, where our cadets are put in an unfamiliar environment, required to lead their peers, evaluated as they lead their peers, and also to face fears and challenges head-on. They also had opportunities in the evenings to participate in organized sporting activities, a visit to the planetarium, and also to do a drill competition. The entire time, the cadets are evaluated, and this is a unique opportunity that our cadets receive to get a different look, from a different perspective, of college life, as well as those benefits that the STEM programs have for them. These are a few photos that show the cadets in action, but what I'd like you to look at is on that upper left-hand side, we had a surprise visitor in Dr. John Horn, who had heard about what the JROTC program was doing at A&amp;M Commerce and decided to come out and pay us a visit, and he was able to witness the competition portion on the last day. With that being said, we have transitioned to this new, what we call a hybrid JCLC, and we took that and decided that we were ready to compete for a Department of Defense STEM grant. There are 10 high schools in the country that received grants from the Department of Defense, and we are one of those high schools, or one of those districts, I should say. Our grant is for 2025, and will be awarded $96,000 in order to conduct our summer program for our students. We already have the STEM learning portion, and we have the JCLC, or Cadet Leadership Challenge, portion already down. The new portion that we will add will be the Workforce Experience, and that's where we actually will now partner with places like Lockheed Martin, Bell Helicopter, and we'll bring our students out to those places for them to get a firsthand look at how STEM careers work. We'll also have the opportunity to bring in guest speakers, and the point of this is to produce a well-rounded student that goes away from our high schools into either post-secondary, the workforce, or the military, that have a well-rounded background and ready to compete against their peers. We talked about the program at Vanguard High School. We are one of 10 high schools in the country selected for this cyber program. Just this past week, we received over $73,000 in computer lab equipment that our tech department is beginning to install over at Vanguard, all expenses paid by the US Army. But what's important about this program is Vanguard is only in its second year of existence, and we have over 120 cadets in the program at Vanguard. Of those 120 cadets, 46 are in the Of those 120 cadets, 46 are in the cyber program, and that program caps out at 48, so we're just too shy of being capped in that program. This program is extremely important because it addresses a need that we have in this country, and that is a shortage of cybersecurity experts. And that need grows every day, and this program is designed, regardless of what the student wants to do, whether they want to go into the workforce, whether they want to go pursue post-secondary education, or whether they decide to go into the military, this program will allow them to be able to do that, and they'll be able to do that with certifications under their belt at that time. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is, we continue to service our community. This year, we've amassed over 11,000 hours of community service and service learning. The value of that back to our community has been over $84,000, and if we go into what's being paid at most fast-food restaurants, that's over $140,000 that our cadets have given back to the community. In closing, I'd like to, first of all, thank this amazing group of instructors that make all of this possible, but one of the things that I'd really like to do is thank the administration here in the district, because as we competed for the grant, and as we competed to be one of the cybersecurity programs, the resounding comment that we got from the grant folks, as well as from the cybersecurity folks, was the dedication that was shown by the administration here in Mesquite ISD. All of our assistant superintendents, some of whom have accompanied me on trips, some of them have accompanied me in VTCs or video teleconferences, the resounding comment is that they're amazed at the great support that district has shown to the JROTC program, and they felt very confident in both awards, us becoming a part of the cyber program and us receiving the grant. So I'd like to thank all of our administrators here in the district for the support that they've given. With that, I thank you for your time, and I'm subject to your questions.
Would you have any questions or comments?
I just wish that we had all these available when I was in the ROTC program.
We value the leadership that each of you provide at all of our schools. Thank you so much. Very proud of you. We're going to move up one item under reports of the superintendent under personnel. Board, if you remember, several years ago, we delegated authority to the superintendent to employ contractual personnel of assistant principal and above, and Dr. Rivera has a couple of appointments that he'd like to introduce.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Laura Jobe, she's going to introduce the assistant principals this evening.
All right. Our first new assistant principal at Woolly Middle School is Melinda Martin. If you'll stand, please. She has completed 17 years in the field of education, and her career began in Arlington ISD as an English teacher. She later transitioned to various teaching positions in Birdville ISD, Northwest ISD, Eagle Mountain ISD, and Fort Worth ISD, and Keller ISD. Her latest position prior to coming to Mesquite ISD was District Curriculum Director for A-plus charter schools. Melinda earned an Associate of Arts degree from Tarrant County College, a Bachelor of Science degree, and Master of Educational Administration from TCU. Welcome. And our next new assistant principal is Dr. Trenica Vinters at Mesquite High School. There you are. Dr. Vinters has completed 19 years in the field of education. Her career began in Fort Worth ISD as a classroom teacher. During her tenure in Fort Worth, she progressed professionally and served as a literacy coach and eventually as an assistant principal. She transitioned to Crowley ISD as a district instructional coordinator, and ultimately arrived in DeSoto ISD, serving as an assistant principal/instructional coordinator. Dr. Vinters earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Langston University, a Master of Science degree from UTA, and a PhD from Walden University. Welcome.
Ms. Martin and Dr. Vinters, congratulations and welcome to Mesquite ISD. Before we move on in our agenda, we'll take about a 10-minute break. Okay, the time is 7:28 PM. We'll go ahead and reconvene from our break. If the Board has no objections, I'd like to move up an item under construction. It's an action item to approve the construction manager/contractor for Horn High School Ninth Grade Center.
Can I object? Can I object?
You can, but I don't know if it'll do any good. Go ahead, Mr. Poppy.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board. Tonight, one of our agenda items is approve construction manager-at-risk for Horn High School. We talked earlier on the Ninth Grade Center. Tonight, we have Graham Bowman from WRA Architects. We have Jay from our facility staff, as well as Landon Kids, and Tommy Freely are here from Poe Construction. The information was provided in the packet, but our recommendation tonight is to award this project to Poe Construction for the Ninth Grade Extension at Horn High School.
Yeah, we had all the information provided on how the contractors were ranked by the five different people, Don and Jay, Susan, Graham, and then one other. I didn't recognize the other name, but a lot of information there, and vetted very well. We have a motion by who? Eddie, and a second by Tia, to approve the CMAR for Horn High School Ninth Grade Centers. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item will be, we'll go back under the effectiveness report. We have a report on student performance by Ms. Donna McCada.
Hello, everyone. It's that time again where we're going to talk about student performance, and you've all seen the effectiveness report that was submitted to you with more of the detailed data in it, but tonight, we want to look at a few things that we did not have at that point. So we're going to talk about Accountability 2022. This screen is extremely small, Dr. Rivera, just so you know. I'm going to put my glasses on then. So, we had some really good news because in 2122, our students were back, and virtual learning ended in October. Everybody can clap. That was a wonderful thing. However, COVID and COVID protocols were still in place. So teachers were in, teachers were out. Students were in, students were out. We had no substitutes, and everyone taught. Teachers taught for other teachers. The leadership team on the campuses taught in classrooms. Central office taught in classrooms. Dr. Rivera taught in classrooms. So everyone taught. And just before school started, we received 4545 requirements, which I know you know what that is. Any student that did not pass a STAR test, any STAR test in 2021 needed 30 hours of acceleration. So it was another new piece that came into play. Fortunately, we had learning recovery teachers and learning recovery specialists. So that's kind of the context for the data that we're going to look at here. But you know what? Students learned, and students grew, and that's our whole purpose, is for our students to learn and grow each and every year. We received our ratings, and the district was a B overall, just like it was in 2019. Seems like a long time ago, doesn't it? But it was 2019 was the last time that we actually had letter grades for campuses in the district. We had six campuses that were As. Motley, Gray, Hamby, McKenzie, Price, and Lawrence were all As. In 2019, we had only four campuses that were As, so we gained there. We had 33 campuses that were Bs, and 23 campuses were Bs in 2019. So it was a nice upward movement. I will say that Motley was an A campus this year, but Motley was also an A campus in 2019, and they're the only repeat campus that we had in that area. Growth is always important, but growth is even more important now as we catch up our students from their learning loss. So we had 11 campuses that received an A, 25 campuses that received a B, and 13 that received a C in growth, which resulted in a 12-point growth for the district overall, which is a very positive thing for our students. Hope you saw in your report that the reading test changed a little bit on STAR this year, which was a positive thing for our students. Approaches is almost back to where it was in 2019, and the Meets and Masters for Reading is above where it was in 2019. Social Studies, especially US History, gained eight points, and that was nine points over their Meets that they had in 2021, but Social Studies isn't quite back to where it was in 2019. This is our math versus the state, and we've always been a strong math district, and when we compare our students with their counterparts across the state, we do really well. Math is also one of those things that require new processes to be learned every year, and so even though we're above the state in all of these areas, our students still have catching up to do in math, just like they do across the state. Our Algebra I, our all-students group, beat the state's all-students group by six points at Approaches, nine at Meets, and three at Masters. So that was a very positive thing for our curriculum. Science is another area where our district's very strong, and the eighth-grade science and biology were both higher than the all-students across the state, which was another positive thing. Distinctions were back. We haven't had distinctions since 2019. If you recall, distinctions are when campuses compared to 40 light campuses, and they're based on the high-end attendance, masters, what they call accelerated growth, and then the advanced academics pieces, SAT, AP dual-credit at the high school level. Distinctions are in all four of the core, and I noticed that Social Studies was left off here. I left Social Studies off here. So it's reading, math, Social Studies, and then all the accountability pieces where campuses can earn a distinction. Our campuses earned 94 distinctions. Vanguard High School earned six out of seven. Berry, six out of seven. Kimbro, five out of seven. So those were some of our star campuses there. At the elementary, Rutherford and Motley both earned five out of six distinctions. Our campuses earned 26 distinctions in science, and 20 campuses earned post-secondary readiness distinctions, and those distinctions are distinctions that are Meets and Masters and above compared to those 40 light campuses. 202122 was a good year for STAR testing, and students learned and students grew. I think it's important for us to remember that STAR testing is only 40% of accountability, and everything else is a lagging indicator, so we want to look at some of those lagging indicators now. Accountability looks at graduation rates, and these are our four-year graduation rates for the class of 2021. You can see that it's 93.5 is the overall. Doesn't mean a whole lot to you unless you compare that to the state's four-year graduation rate, and you can see that we did a lot better job in graduating our class of 2021 in four years than the state did. However, the accountability looks at four-year, five-year, or six-year, whatever's better, and five-year is generally the one that we end up using in accountability. That takes us all the way back to the class of 2020 when we're looking at that, and that allows the students that needed a few extra credits in order to graduate to be part of accountability as well. So you can see our five-year graduation rate for the class of 2020 was 95.9, and that's 20% of accountability. The other 40% is college career and military readiness. Last year, I was able to stand up here and tell you that we had grown 20 points in four years. This year, our CCMR rate was 60%. So let's talk about that just a little bit. I think it's important to set the context and understand that we're talking about the class of 2021. We have to remember that in their junior year, March 2020, they went home on spring break, and COVID hit, and they didn't come back. So there are a lot of things changed for them their junior year that affect this CCMR as well. All the advanced placements, all those AP scholars that we talked about tonight and were recognized, all those tests went online for the first time ever. They no longer were multiple choice, they were straight-up composition, and if you may not remember, but I remember the old Blue Book in college, where you just were given the question and you wrote, and that's what they did. They could upload that on their computers, they could take a picture with their phone and send it in, so a lot of different things happened there. And I think we have to commend our students. They took 3,092 AP tests like that that year. However, that was 437 less than what was taken in 2019, and the credits earned dropped by 5%. They'd already taken the SAT before they went out, and we were in the middle of doing TSI testing for dual-credit. We didn't have all our TSI tests given in that area. We tried to do that with remote proctoring, but it did not prove to be beneficial for our students. And then somewhere along the way, colleges said that there would be a COVID waiver for dual-credit, that if you had an A overall in ELA, that you could take a dual-credit course that was an ELA course. If you had a B overall in math, then you could take a dual-credit that was a B. So TSI testing stopped at that point. Then here comes their senior year. Learn anywhere, remember that, for everyone, the first four weeks of school, and then learn anywhere or in person was the option for the rest of the year, and teachers taught on dual-platform. So about 50% of our high school students returned when they could, but fewer upper classmen returned than freshmen or sophomores. I think parents were probably more comfortable with those students staying home, some of them were taking care of siblings, some of them went to work because it was a difficult economic time for the community overall. Students had to come in that year to take AP tests, to take SAT, to take TSI, and many of them just did not come in. So the number of AP tests taken dropped again by almost 200 tests, which overall would have been 700 tests from 2019. So this is the context of the class of 2021, and they think they did well considering all the things that they were going through at that point. There were some positive things that showed up in CCMR. The college prep course for ELA and for math were courses that students could take in person, or if they were online, it was a course that they were taking online with their teacher, and those numbers went up. So that means that that number of kids could go to college without taking remedial courses, so that was a good thing for them. Industry-based certifications went up, a plus 90, and then we graduated our first group of on-ramps dual-enrollment students, which is courses we do, US History and Chemistry, that is in conjunction with UT Austin, a college professor there, and then our teacher acts as a facilitator, and students can earn college credit without having to meet the TSI requirements of dual-credit. So all in all, Mesquite ISD was a B district, and that's kind of the context of the whole thing. So we had 40% from STAR 2022. So we had 40% from STAR 2022, we had 20% from the class of 2020, and we had 40% from the class of 2021. So it's a very complex system. We'll tell you this is the last year for that as far as the district goes. High schools will still have that 40-40-20, but district accountability next year will be different, and it will not be the 40-40-20. So are there any questions?
Everybody. Hey, everybody. And the numbers are going north, which is what we want to see.
And they'll go further north this year.
Yep.
That evolution for those kids, 2021, they did it.
They did. It was hard. It's been hard for them. You know, we talk about the class of 2020 and the graduation concerns that they didn't get to have, you know, because of that, but really, it was the class of 2021 that lived it the most.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning the fact that less kids have to take their remedial classes when they go to colleges and all that, because that was a concern we had many years ago.
Yes.
And now that we see it's getting better, I mean, that's exactly what we want.
It is. Okay.
Good job.
Anything else?
Donna, do we know how, how much longer the letter grade is going to be in place regarding accountability?
I've seen no indication it's going away.
Okay.
It's just going to be figured differently starting next year. For the district only, campuses should be about the same as the way they're being figured, but the district will be different.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is a report under administration regarding the VADER overview. And Ms. Jobe.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to begin tonight by showing you a video that we have created to explain this election to our community and our parents and our employees. As you know, there, it's, it's a bit of a convoluted issue, and so we thought maybe a video was the best way to explain it overall.
The Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees has called a voter-approved tax rate election this fall. A board-approved tax rate election, or VADER, allows school districts to seek voter approval to maximize the impact of the proposed tax rate increase above the state's minimum tax rate. Mesquite ISD is asking voters to approve a three-cent increase to the maintenance and operations portion of the school district's tax rate. This increase would result in $16.4 million in additional funds for Mesquite ISD school while keeping the overall tax rate lower than last year's rate. Our most significant areas of need include teacher salaries, safety and security, and academic programming. Mesquite ISD's starting teacher salary is lower than the starting salary offered by several other districts in our area. The nation is experiencing a severe teacher shortage. The additional revenue raised by the approval of the VADER will allow Mesquite ISD to significantly increase compensation for all Mesquite ISD staff, including teachers, classroom aides, custodians, and bus drivers. A successful VADER will also allow MISD to increase the minimum starting wage to $15 per hour one year earlier than originally planned. The increase in funding will allow the districts to upgrade our safety and security measures and improvements such as better door access control, more security panels, and enhanced technologies such as state-of-the-art surveillance systems. The district also plans to use the additional funding to expand innovative academic programs district-wide, providing more choices and opportunities for our students as they prepare for life after graduation. We plan to spend these dollars on programs to support college and career readiness and provide unique learning experiences. We also plan to add more fine arts classes and enhance our parent and community outreach efforts.
Texas School District's tax rate consists of two parts, the MNO rate and the INS rate. Revenue from the MNO rate pays for the district's daily operations, including salaries, utilities, and educational materials. Revenue from the INS rate pays the district's debt that finances bonds which fund large investments like construction projects. Mesquite ISD's total tax rate has declined by nearly 21 cents since 2018, 2019. In August, the board lowered the INS tax rate by 4 cents and the MNO tax rate by 1.74 cents for a total tax rate of $1.2546 per $100 of property valuation. This is a total tax rate reduction of 5.74 cents from last year. The district is now seeking voter approval to increase the MNO rate by 3 cents, which, if approved, will still result in a reduction of 2.74 cents over last year's tax rate. The 3-cent increase would generate 3.7 million annually in local tax revenue, but because they're golden pennies, the 3-cent increase would also result in 12.7 million in additional funding from the state annually for a total revenue increase of 16.4 million each year. If voters do not approve the increase of the three golden pennies, Mesquite ISD will not receive any of the 16.4 million of additional revenue.
What do the three additional cents mean in terms of cost for the average homeowner? Assuming they have a homestead exemption, owners of a home valued at $200,000 will pay approximately $48 per year more in taxes, or $4 per month. If voters approve this measure, likewise, for owners of a home valued at $500,000, their school property taxes will be approximately $138 higher per year, or $11.50 per month.
Homeowners who have the disabled residence homestead exemption or over 65 homestead exemption will not see their property tax increase because state law freezes their taxes as long as they remain in their homes and do not make any major home improvements. Here's the language you can expect to see on the ballot when you go to cast your vote. A new state law requires very specific language on the ballot, and Mesquite ISD cannot alter it in any way, even to clarify what it means.
What voters will see on the ballot is only information about the increase to the MNO side of the tax rate. If we had the opportunity to clarify this language on the ballot for our voters, here's what we will say.
First, we would say the Board of Trustees has lowered the overall tax rate by 5.74 cents from last year's tax rate. Second, we would say that the approval of the VADER proposal to add 3 cents back to the MNO portion of the tax rate will result in an overall tax rate that is still 2.74 cents lower than last year's tax rate. Third, we would explain that approval of this measure will add $16.4 million in additional revenue to MISD's budget each year. Revenue that we plan to invest in more competitive salaries for teachers and other support personnel, enhanced safety and security measures, and more academic choices for our students.
Please share this information with your family and friends and neighbors. Early voting begins October 24th and goes through November 4th. Election Day is November the 8th.
Okay, so that was a lot of information in that one video. Thumbs up from Mr. Vigan. So let me just explain, our goal in that was to provide one vehicle that had everything a voter would need to know. However, we don't plan to show that at every opportunity. That's when we have a very limited amount of time and need to get a bunch of information out quickly to a group. Now, we can break that video into smaller pieces, we'll probably put that on social media, that sort of thing. So that was kind of the plan for the video. Yes, sir. We will have it in Spanish, and we will have captions for hearing impaired as well. So let me tell you a little bit more about our information campaign. You have seen this timeline before, but I thought it would be good to revisit it. So right now, the week of 9/12, we are beginning our campaign. We actually hit the ground running tomorrow. And some of the things that we will be doing are staff meetings with our campuses, community meetings, we have a social media plan, our district website will have the information up tomorrow morning, and you've just seen the video, we also have signs that we will be putting up at every campus and facility around the district. So here we go. This is our, this is a piece of our schedule. We have dozens of presentations scanned for the next six weeks or so, and I just wanted to give you a snippet of what that looks like, and we are still adding more. So this is a very organic document. Also tells you a little bit more detail about what we plan. We will be having a community meeting that is exclusively in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking audience, and then we will have an English version about 10 days later. So that is upcoming as well. This is just a picture of the sign. I just wanted you to know what to look for around town, so it conveniently has a QR code that anyone can just scan, and they can, that will take them directly to our website where they can read all about the election and all the different parts. And this is our web address, very simple, mesquitasd.org/vader. So, yeah, it is ramping up, you're right. It's going to be very, very busy over the next few weeks, but as you know, it's our responsibility, since you called the election, to inform our voters about it so that they can make an informed decision. Any other questions?
I love your clean, well-done presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Video was so helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Crystal.
A lot of ways to explain.
It's like, oh, and we can fit that in, and put it that in. So, yeah, it's, it's, well, thank you. I'm glad you think so. That was our goal.
Yeah, you pointed out very well in the video that our total tax rate is going down by almost 3 cents, but because values have increased is what we're looking at here why people, you know, the average homeowner may pay a little bit more money. But Texas ranks 42nd in the nation in per pupil expenditure, and with a significant increase in the rainy day fund, or whatever you want to call it, we're anticipating that the legislature will do something for public school funding in this next session that will help alleviate some of the problems that all public school districts in Texas have experienced. Over 600 school districts have had a VADER or a TRE in the past, and so our objective will be obviously to get the word out, provide factual information. We're not able to tell people how to vote. We just encourage them to study all the details, and please do vote.
Absolutely.
Just want to recap. If our voters will approve, they will come up with about 3.7 million, but the state of Texas will come along and give us 12.7 because they've done that. That's a pretty good return on your investment.
It's the magic of golden pennies.
We can't, we can't do that any other way. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us. First time we've been able to take advantage of this opportunity, that's why we're doing it right now. Plus, we've got some great things we'll spend the money on if it's approved, so.
Like you said, Gary, this will be an investment in our students and overall in our community as well. I believe it will significantly add value to everything that we do as a school district. So any other comments or questions? Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is under instruction. It's a report on the summer academic programs, including accelerated instruction report. Come forward.
Hello, everybody. Excuse me? Good afternoon, Dr. Rivera and School Board. I would like to take this opportunity to present to you the information for our summer programs for 2022. Mesquite ISD provides a variety of summer programs for our students. This year, we continued with recovering lost in learning with learning opportunities like credit recovery, which allowed students to recruit credit that was lost during the school year. Students were also given the opportunity to receive extra support and to work on their House Bill 4545 hours by working with some of our best and most passionate teachers. Our summer programs give students an opportunity to work in small classroom setting, which focused on their individual growth and progress. Not only did we recover loss in learning, but we also had transition programs such as Fresh U and The Deal that allowed us to reengage students and provide extra support to incoming sixth graders and ninth graders to decrease our dropout rates. Mesquite ISD's summer programs extend and support student learning on all levels. Our summer school programs looked a little different this year. We changed the program at every level to facilitate and match the requirements of House Bill 4545. This year, we offer credit recovery at each of our high schools, and students at Mesquite Academy were also able to recover credit. Teaching and learning created new resources and rewrote almost all of our summer curriculum. Construction, building repairs, and other obstacles did not stop the instruction opportunities and fun experiences that our eight different programs had to offer. Traditional summer school offered courses for original credit to students who wanted to get ahead or to make room in their schedule for other courses during the school year. The in-touch online payment system provided an added convenience to students and parents for paying for their summer school courses. 387 students were enrolled this year, which was an increase of about 80 more students than last year. I believe this increase is due to counselors promoting it on all the campuses. Summer PE is offered to give students the opportunity to receive a full year of credit. This enables students to fit other courses such as band and art into their schedule during the school year. We had 68 middle school students participate in summer PE. Mesquite ISD recovering learning is for any student at risk of not promoting to the next grade, students with gaps in learning, and/or students who did not perform well on STAR. Students had the opportunity again to complete all of their required House Bill 4545 hours in the summer. High school credit recovery is an opportunity for students to regain credit to complete requirements for promotion. Students sometimes may encounter a variety of challenges throughout the school year, which may affect their attendance and performance in school. Credit recovery provides an opportunity for students to revisit those subjects to gain credit. This summer, it was provided at each high school campus. High schools did a fantastic job getting students ready in 10 days for retesting. All of our content areas have revised curriculum and activities. One cool piece of data you can see is that we saw 51% of our students who tested in math receive Approaches grade level. This is compared to 32% of the state. Middle school recovery learning, we targeted the students to satisfy House Bill 4545 requirements. 1,405 students attended recovery learning in middle school. This is 508 more students than last year. Teaching and learning really focused on what would be taught this year and how to recover learning. For example, in science, our eighth graders were introduced to high priority biology teacs to prepare them for this school year. Elementary recovery learning students were identified the same way as middle and high school students. Students from every elementary campus attended through 13 hubs, which was done to maximize personnel. Transportation was provided to those students who attended those hubs. Looking at the learning highlights, we see that on average, there was learning growth for every grade level, kinder through fifth. Our bilingual ESL program was held at two elementary campuses, Florence and Hamby Elementary, welcomed 283 students to their campus. Students received special instruction and design to prepare them to be successful in kindergarten and first grade this year. STAR ELC offers intensive academic interventions for students who did not meet STAR passing standards. During this time, students prepare for any combination of STAR exams. It was provided at each high school campus in English, math, science, and social studies. We hosted 2,241 students and 2,448 students tested. Fresh U and The Deal, which will be on the next slide, are two of our invitational programs for students transitioning either from elementary to middle school or middle school to high school. Fresh U is for our incoming freshmen, and it introduces new freshmen to high school by using team-building activities. Students attend their future home campus by building relationships with the teachers on that campus. It also gives students an opportunity to transition to high school without feeling anxious. This year, we had 168 students attend Fresh U across each of our six high school campuses. The Deal is our transition program that provides support and connections for sixth graders. The Deal is our transition program that provides support and connections for sixth-grade students entering middle school. They have collaborative, problem-solving, non-threatening, fun-focused environment, and students explore learning, and it increases their self-awareness. At the end of the program, students have less anxiety and are more confident about their transition from elementary school to middle school, as you can see from one of our parent reviews. This summer, we had 274 students attend. Summer graduation, 59 students were eligible for graduation at the conclusion of our summer programs. This is possible because of the opportunity that traditional summer school and credit recovery provides to our students. Without summer credit recovery, students would have to wait until the spring to graduate. So this slide here is kind of the brag slide. As you can see, there's different bullet points on there. We start planning for summer programs in January, and it's with all of the bullet points that you see on the slide. It takes a village really to put it all together. It's a lot of planning. But one thing I can personally say is that I really enjoyed working with the different departments and to find out how each person is so passionate about what they do in that department. So for instance, I worked with transportation and nurses, food service, teaching and learning, Paris, teachers, everyone involved to make it work. Are there any questions? Okay.
The, the Fresh U and The Deal that the students are involved in, do they volunteer for that, or how are they selected?
So there's a criteria that we use to pick those students that can attend, and so we invite them out, and then their parents sign them up to attend. I hope so. I love it. At this time, I would like to ask the fantastic Ms. Maketa to come up.
I think we're just supposed to present the summer 2022 EOC testing results, and you can see there, you can see there how we compare to the state in our summer EOCs, and you can see that our strength lies in Algebra I and Biology. Any questions on that? I think it's.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you all very much. Good report. Next item under instruction is to, an action item to conduct a public hearing to evaluate the accelerated instruction effectiveness.
Y'all want to speak on that?
I think she did a very effective job.
She did. Typically, when we conduct a public hearing, anyone in the audience can step forward and speak to that. Does anybody have a desire to do that? Seeing none. So this is, does she need to bypass that? Okay, we'll move on to a report, replay talk update. Ms. Lindsay Paris. So nobody came forward, so the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Coming forward for something else.
Now we'll, now we'll have Lindsay come and give us an update on Replay Talk 2022.
Yes, good evening. I am happy and excited to give an update to you all on Replay Talk. We had a really busy summer and a very eventful fall coming up, and so I'm happy to share those things with you. It's funny, anytime I run into someone in the district or in the community during the summertime, they're like, oh, are things slowing down? You're catching a break? And I always say, no, summer is our busiest time of the year, it feels like. We offer more events in the summertime, more community outreach, parent education programs in the summer than we do at any other point of the year. And that's because we believe the summer months are important and necessary for us to interact with families, parents, and caregivers, encouraging them to continue to read, play, and talk with their child every day, especially read. So we try to hand out as many resources and books to kids throughout the summer as we can. This summer, we brought back our summer pop-up series. This is something we started last summer with the Read Play Talk bus. So as a similar format, we went to four local parks, three in Mesquite and one in Balt Springs. We set up the bus. We had community partners there, such as the public libraries for whatever city we were in, childcare group, a few other community partners, and we would just provide resources to families, get to talk to parents, talk to kids, remind them, you know, read every day, give them books to be able to do so. We were also able to hand out summer promotional items that were more on the play side. We had frisbees and bubbles and Read Play Talk sunglasses and all the things. And those were all thanks to a very generous donation that we received from Atmos Energy at the end of the spring semester. We continue our Read Play Talk storytimes during the summer months as well. As you can imagine, our attendance increases quite a bit in the summer months, just because our older kids are out of school. And so we just see a lot more families come. So we try to make, we make those storytimes enjoyable, and we get some of our biggest partners out there to really entice families to come. So we had Whataburger of Mesquite as a guest reader. We had the Mesquite Fire Department, Mesquite Mayor Dan Alamon, and the Mesquite Public Library. They each came and brought incredible giveaways and resources to families. This fall, we are bringing back the Read Play Talk Festival. This will be our fourth year to have this event. Saturday, October 29th, 11 to 2 at Towne Small, same spot underneath the mall's main marquee in the parking lot. We're hopeful for good weather again this year. Events are important for us, right? They help us reach a large amount of people and hopefully bring awareness about the initiative to those families that may not have come in contact with it like that before. And when they come to those events, we're able to direct them to maybe other parent education programs or other offerings that we have within our district. The Read Play Talk Festival is a fundraising event for Read Play Talk. The funds that we raise allow us to do so many things in the community, whether that's goes towards our parent education programs or buy other books, resources, and giveaways to hand out. The funds that we raise are really important. A year ago, when we offered this event again, we centered it kind of around Halloween and gave it a trunk-or-treat theme. It just kind of fell that way. We kind of ran out of options on weekends, and it fell on Halloween weekend, and it really worked out great. While the Replay Talk Festival was a fun event and families really enjoyed it, there wasn't a ton of opportunities for parent-child interaction at that event before last year. But when we centered it around Halloween, we encouraged every vendor to provide a game, an activity, or craft for the families to do when they visited their booth. We provided them with candy to hand out, and then they provided the activity. So we, we appreciate how adding that element gave parents and children an opportunity to interact and engage with each other. Community resources are another huge component of Read Play Talk. I think Ms. Samples has for you all the new Read Play Talk calendar. We were very happy to bring back this piece this year. Title One actually funded this project for us. The communications department played a huge role in it. Wade Odom and Erin Libby helped design the entire calendar. Teaching and Learning came up with the content for each month, and so we're just so grateful and so happy with the way that the project turned out. This went home with every elementary student in the district, and it's in English and in Spanish. We still have the Read Play Talk podcast. That starts up again this month. We take off during the summer months. We have the Read Play Talk Digital Magazine, which comes out quarterly, and the free Read Play Talk parenting classes, which we partner with Teaching and Learning on to provide those. Of course, we could not do all of this without community partnerships. You'll find on this slide a list of community partners that either made financial donations to Read Play Talk or in-kind donations within the last three or four months. And it was because of these donations that we were able to do so many things this summer. The video that you saw earlier with the auxiliary to the Mesquite Elks Lodge, I was telling, I think, Ms. Samples at dinner, I received a check from them out of the blue. I just, no contact at all. And, but that started just a really unique relationship with them, and I'm looking forward to a continued partnership. So more organizations, nonprofits, they're finding out about Read Play Talk and wanting to be involved with us, which is really exciting. They allow us to grow. One way that we're growing is with Lena Start, so I'd love to give you an update on that. As of now, we have served 90 families through the Lena Start program. We're expecting roughly 40 families to participate in the program this fall. Right now, we have an 85% graduation rate for Lena Start, and that's compared to Lena, on average, all their sites see about a 71% graduation rate. So we are above average, which is awesome. And at the end of the program, families are reading an average of 14 more minutes per day. Here are some charts that will show the changes that we're seeing in families during the 10 weeks that they're participating in our program. So on the left-hand side, you'll see just the changes that we're seeing in adult words and in conversational turns. So you can see a 30% increase and a 10% increase in conversational turns. Throughout the program, parents take a developmental snapshot survey that tracks and measures the child's language development. So we have seen an average of about a 40% growth in the child's language development from week one of the program to week 10, which I'll show you, I think, in the next slide compared to other sites. Most sites in Lena see about a 20% increase, and so we're seeing 40%, which is pretty incredible. But I do want to draw your attention to the left chart, which is the percentile growth in conversational turns. I'm going to be honest, the last time I gave this presentation to you, I did not show you this chart because we were not on the chart. Like, we were off the chart, but not in a good way. We were below the chart. And so we've really worked with our Lena specialist, our contact there, to find, okay, what can we do? What can we add in our parent education programs to increase conversational turns? And as you can see, now we are above the average, which is really exciting. And we believe that is due to just allowing more conversation between the families and our programs, providing more specific examples, and just opportunities for practice within the group. So we are very proud of the changes and the growth that we're seeing in families. Of course, this is only the short-term growth. This is only in 10 weeks, but we do have plans to track the long-term development and long-term growth in the children whose families participate in this program. You might remember, in the fall, we added Lena Start to Henry Elementary. We are expanding that program. Two more campuses are offering Lena Start this fall, so we have Hodges and Porter. And then we are offering a virtual English group. On the campuses, those are all Spanish groups, and we had a pretty significant interest for an English group. So we're offering an English group that starts this week. All of our groups start either on Wednesday or Thursday this week. And then we have four more campuses that will offer the program in the spring. We really believe this is the most effective way to reach the most families. This way, we have Lena Start groups all over our city. Families are going into schools that maybe their older children go into, they feel comfortable there, they know their teachers. And so we are, we really believe that this will help us take Lena Start to a whole other level. Oh, I think I, sorry. I did want to point this out, and I know Mrs. Maketa, she mentioned it in her presentation, but we are overall seeing some significant growth in our third grade reading STAR results. I know that that is the overall goal of Read Play Talk, is to have all children reading on grade level by third grade. So you can see, this is the Meets chart, so we are ahead where we were even in 2018, which I think is really significant. And then the Masters, we are still ahead of 2018 as well. I know we still have a long way to go. We still have a lot more families to meet, but I think that this is promising, that what we're doing is working, and so we'll continue, you know, on our end, on the community side, and obviously on the instruction side, to set our students up for success in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good job. Next item is under construction, an action item, I'm sorry, business. It's an action item to approve the budget amendment. Mr. Poppy?
Good evening, members of the board. We have one budget amendment with two parts for you to discuss this evening. I'll briefly go over part A and part B. Part A is a change in philosophy. Just be thankful you never have to worry about paying travel out of federal funds. That is quite the headache and become very cumbersome. So one of the things we decided this year was to not do that anymore, and so we're moving it over to local funds. And so we just basically swapped some positions. And so when our campuses travel, we don't, currently, if it's a federal, you have to pay for it out of local funds. Once the conference has occurred, then you have to go and JV it over, journal entry, over to the federal fund. You can't pay for it out of federal fund until the person actually goes to the conference. Pretty cumbersome. So we are changing that process. So we're just moving monies from function 11 to function 13. It doesn't change the bottom line, and that's part A. Part B, as you know, we are building the V building. We are adding the wrestling facility. Part of that facility is also the middle school golf. On the back portion of that building, there will be a putting green built. So we are asking for monies from fund balance to be moved, allocated over to the Capital Projects Fund to pay for that cost. The cost is approximately $300,000 strictly for parts, installation, and buildup. The remaining monies are for the other peripherals of that project and to give us a little bit of cushion just in case. We do experience cost delays or increase in shipping costs due to some other issues, but that money will be more than, will more than cover the cost of the, of the full putting green.
There's a contract that's included in this from Hellas Construction. It's dated July 20th, but it says that pricing valid for 14 days from date of this proposal. Are they extending that initial date?
Yes, they are.
Anybody have any questions?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Seeing no other items on the agenda, this meeting, it's 8:20 PM. This meeting is adjourned.